We'll call this meeting to order. And I appreciate you all's indulgence. We just came out of our committee meeting, so we're running just a tad bit behind. Counselor Berg, will you do the prayer?
Lord, prepare. Be the God of us, though. Oh, he does it alone, he ain't calling his son, yeah. Oh, to leave here, leave, my God, so the dust and make it. Now, let's go, yeah, needful, on that, needful, the acts, yes, he does, yes. Who go the words, he go, can't, it's like a yes, I. The most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here and serve our people. And we just thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon our trial. With this busy time of the year, dear Lord, we just say, be with our leaders and be with our families and let us make the right decisions for our people. Forgive us for we may fall short in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Shelley, will you do the roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Jack Baker?
Here.
Charlie Buesser?
Here.
Joe Bird?
Here.
Julia Kettles?
Here.
Judge Fishin Hall?
Here.
And Uncle Brian?
Present.
Don Garvin?
Present.
Hank Sargus?
Present.
And Huskin Jr.?
Here.
Kinda Glory Jordan?
Present.
Lee Keener?
Here.
Dick White?
Here.
Curtis Nell?
Here.
Denise Taylor?
Here.
David Thornton?
Oni.
David Walkensteg?
Oni.
Carrie Callan Watts?
Oni.
We do have a forum. Okay. We're here tonight on, under new business regarding a special meeting of an August 19, 2013, letter by Bill John Baker, Principal Chief of the Cherokee Nation, convening a meeting of the Cherokee Nation Council for tonight at 5:00 with four items. And that will be the only items that we will take up tonight. The first item is, number one, is, would be the budgets for fiscal year 2014.
Madam Speaker, I make the motion with an amendment.
Okay.
And that is in front of you. It's titled Fiscal Year 2014 Budget Amendment requested by Council Members Lee Keener and Carrie Callan Watts. And it's concerning charitable contributions accounting unit 1010042. It's a single sheet of paper, white with black. And it outlines five donations, because Rogers and Tulsa County were left out in the consideration of those donations, and there was $35,200 unearmarked after the balance, according to the email from Jody Reese, our accountant. And their outline is $5,000 for Safe Net Domestic Violence Shelter to pay off their debt towards their building, which serves Rogers, Mays, and Craig County; $10,200 to Chelsea Boys and Girls Club for building repairs, because they're in immediate repairs for safety issues; $5,000 for Will Rogers Park renovation donation, which neighbors the Claremore Indian Hospital and would help families that are there and stuck at the hospital; $10,000 for the Sperry Gazeebo and Park Restoration downtown Sperry and the roof; $5,000 for the Ugal Community Center construction donation totaling $35,200, which matched the unearmarked balance for that accounting unit.
Ms. Watts has made a motion with an amendment that would take up the entire amount of remaining funds in charitable contribution. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Is there discussion?
Madam Speaker.
Yes.
Just on information, she's moved the entire budget as a substitute for what we had before us to include these additions.
Yes.
I just want to understand that we're voting on the entire budget when we take a vote as she has amended.
Yes. Other comments? I do have a comment from the chair. We were taking into consideration that Will Rogers Museum was already getting $25,000 in the budget. There's also domestic violence money in the budget. There's also boys and girls money in the budget. I think that when, when we talked about this in committee, there were only three items that were given to me. And the Will Rogers Park was the only change from what was already in the budget. And at that time, you were asking, not you, but I believe Counselor McKeener asked for $10,000 for the Will Rogers Park, which he said was separate from the Will Rogers Museum. And had Mr. Keener been here today, I was going to visit with him about that, about adding just that part into the budget. I don't know how the rest of the, the committee feels, but these are items that were talked about in the Budget Committee before. And I will not be supporting the amendment part. So I would ask for your consideration in voting down this motion, so that we can come back with another motion regarding the entire budget. We can come back with another motion. We need to ask for our legal counsel to give us some clarification. Are we only able to vote on the budget just one time tonight? If this motion fails, can we come back with another motion, which is addressing number one, which will only address the budget that came out of committee, with maybe a slight amendment to it?
The Constitution that provides for special meetings says that only agenda items that can be considered are the ones that are posted, and not other agenda items.
Well, we are considering the budget. My question is, she has made a motion with amendments. If this is voted down, can we come back with a second motion that says we want to pass the budget pursuant to number one, and we have a slight amendment to it? She's trying to make an amendment to it. And I'm not sure we can even make an amendment at this point, because it says, I'm presuming that this meant the budget's coming out of committee with no changes to it.
We should amend her motion. Do we want to give the committee? Do we want to? Just, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, the motion on the floor is to amend the entire budget with these changes. She's made it effectively a substitute, and it's got seconded. So that's a motion on the floor. Make a motion to amend, to strike everything off the list of FY2014 Budget Amendment, with the exception of the Will Rogers Park renovation donation, which is what Counselor Keener expressed an interest in at committee. So if, so that's a motion to amend.
And I'll second it. Okay. I think that-
And Madam, and if we're in discussion, Madam Speaker, I should add that, you know, discussions of these items can continue on in the fiscal year. This, we can have further, particularly a Budget Committee where these things are usually discussed comprehensively, so.
So we have a motion and a second to amend her motion, and the amendment is to pass the budget with $10,000 for-
Will Rogers.
-the park.
We're gonna put, I would say-
Will Rogers Park renovation donation.
$10,000 rather than $5,000, because that's what Counselor Keener requested at budget hearing.
Okay. Now, are all minds clear?
Madam Speaker.
Yes.
So I want the folks of Tulsa County and Western Rogers County to know that I was never approached to have projects considered in my district. So effectively, the council has, has made sure and accommodated every other district except for the one in Tulsa, and most of Tulsa County in the western portion. So there are no special projects, the same as other counties that receive.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that's clear on the record. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
And I would like to make clear that charitable contributions includes domestic violence. It includes boys and girls. It includes a number of organizations across the 14 counties, which included Tulsa. So I don't believe Tulsa's underserved. I would take offense with that statement. Are there any other statements? Yes?
Yes, I just have one question. Will Rogers Park, back several years ago, is a, was a state entity. And I'd like to know, is it still a state entity, or is it a county entity?
May I? If he wants to defer. Would you like? I don't know the answer to-
To my knowledge, the city of Claremore owns Will Rogers Park. It's there in the V between Highway 20 and, is that, I'm not, where, where you go up to RSU, and you go up to Will Rogers Memorial to the right, and then you would go left on Highway 20, Claremore Indian Hospital in front of that. It's that big portion of that V budding up to RSU's property. And the park used to have a swimming pool, and that was filled in, and it's been neglected for some time. And this group, led by Cherokee family, has restored it, a big portion of it already, in that they put a splash pad in, but there's still a tremendous amount of work done, and they've approached us and asked for assistance. And they're still fundraising and writing for grants.
I know that Oklahoma Tourism gave funding to that park every year. I don't know where it is.
Maybe that's the Will Rogers Memorial, Birthplace Ranch, but that's a separate entity. To my knowledge, that's all the city of Claremore, because the city of Claremore had to give them permission for the splash pad and other things, and they're working in partnership. They have an MOU or MOA in agreement with that, that park. And you cross the street from the Claremore Indian Hospital, and it gives people an outlet to go picnic in the shade, rather than on the pretty dismal Claremore Indian Hospital facility, IHF facility. I hope I've answered your question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there other comments? Yes, Ms. Fishin Hall.
I seem to remember in the budget that there was food factories, community centers. I think there was domestic violence, the backpack programs, the Boys and Girls Club was in there. And this covered the whole 14 counties, not just Tulsa, not just Hager. It was across the 14 counties. And if I'm correct, C and B themselves give an extra, I want to say it was at least $50,000 to a women's and kids shelter that we had requested up in Tulsa County, that was in Tulsa County and outside the 14 counties. And I'd like to point that out.
Other comments? Okay, let's just, just for a point of clarification, what we're voting on is a motion to approve the budget that was discussed in committee.
Madam Speaker, it's, it's a motion to amend her main motion.
Yes, motion to amend her main motion, which will approve the budget and put $10,000 towards the park that Lee Keener recommended in committee.
And if I could, Madam Speaker, if we approve this motion, then we'll take a second vote on the full, full motion.
Okay. Are all minds clear? Mine's about as clear as mud. You're just, you're just taking a motion right now to vote to amend her motion, removing her amendments and putting in $10,000, then we're gonna go back and vote on the whole thing with the $10,000 in there, if you approve it. Now, is that a clear clarification? All minds clear? I think we need to do a roll call. Yes vote is, we're going to amend her motion. A no vote, we go back to her motion with her amendments. Okay. Shelley.
Counselor?
Yes.
Julia Kettles?
No.
Jody Fishin Hall?
Yes.
Janelle Fulbright?
Yes.
Don Garvin?
Yes.
Frankie Hargis?
Yes.
Chuck Hoskins Jr.?
Yes.
Kinda Glory Jordan?
Yes.
Lee Keener?
Yes.
Dick White?
Yes.
Curtis Nell?
Yes.
Denise Taylor?
Yes.
David Thornton?
Yes.
David Walkensteg?
Yes.
Carrie Callan Watts?
No.
Jack Baker?
No.
Charlie Buesser?
He said no.
Who's the kid is that?
Okay. That motion carries, that returns us to the main budget with a-
As amended.
As amended, with a $10,000 amount to go in charitable contributions for Will Rogers Park renovation donation.
I just wanted to make sure you were aware, make sure that there's two acts, one for operating and one for capital. So, I mean, you're saying the budget, but I just want to make sure that-
And he had on, the chief had on as consideration of Cherokee Nation operating and capital budgets for FY2014, so I'm assuming that we're taking both of them up in the one, one motion. Are all minds clear? Comments? Okay, we'll do this by roll call. Vote also. Shelley.
David Thornton?
Yes.
David Walkensteg?
Yes.
Carrie Callan Watts?
Yes.
Jack Baker?
Yes.
Charlie Buesser?
Yes.
Joe Bird?
Yes.
Julia Kettles?
Yes.
Jody Fishin Hall?
Yes.
Janelle Fulbright?
Yes.
Don Garvin?
Yes.
Frankie Hargis?
Yes.
Chuck Hoskins Jr.?
Yes.
Kinda Glory Jordan?
Yes.
Lee Keener?
Yes.
Dick White?
Yes.
Curtis Nell?
Yes.
Denise Taylor?
Yes.
Lee Kettles, yes.
Okay. That act will carry, and we will move on. And I commend all of you all on your work on the budget for the next year, which will start October 1. Number two is election of the Deputy Speaker of the Council of the Cherokee Nation. Madam, I would like to make a question.
Second.
For Nell, to be, I'm trying to open all my papers, I got one. For the election of the Deputy Speaker of the Council, and that would be for Janelle Fulbright.
I'd just take that.
We have doodling seconds here.
Give it to the-
Okay. We've got a motion and second. Questions or comments? Okay. This is a, I believe it's a resolution.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Ayes would have it. Congratulations, Ms. Fulbright. And- And if you will stay with us tonight, I think we have a, yes, Judge John Garrett's here with us tonight. So we have the oath, and we'll take care of that after, after the meeting. All right. The third item on our agenda is Chuck Hoskins Jr. as nominee for the Cherokee Nation Secretary of State. Do I hear a motion? Make a motion to- Resolution for making nomination of Chuck Hoskins Jr. as Secretary of State, Cherokee Nation.
Stegan.
Okay, we have a motion and second. We, we're going to have him come up to the podium. I'd like to give you a few minutes, Mr. Hoskins, if you would, and then we'll open it up to questions or comments.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. It's wonderful to be here today. It's wonderful to accept the chief's nomination. And I appreciate the confidence that he has in me, that I can execute the duties of Secretary of State. I want to thank my family who is here. All of you know in this council, you don't do anything in public life without your family. That's, that's true. And I can attest to that, because my son is bringing me a cup of water. This is my son Tristan. When I ran for office, he was 10 years old, and I said, "Son, when I run for reelection, you can drive me around to campaign." And he's grown up a bit since then. He's now the tallest person in the household, which is not a very tall order, but, but I think he takes after his grandpa, Big Chuck, as, as they call him. I have a number of family members here. My, my wonderful lovely wife, January, is here, and I couldn't do anything without her. You've met Tristan, and to his left is his girlfriend, Crystal. I'm glad Crystal's here. My daughter, Jazzy, who's being conspicuously quiet, I did not know she was here. Jazzy, well, she's been good. There may have been some sedatives involved. My stepdad, Rick, who's also been with me since that first campaign, and his girlfriend, Carrie, I'm glad that they both made that long ride down. My sister, Amy. And Amy, I'm so glad you're here. My little sister, Mills. I have a little sister, Mills, Amelia. And I'm so glad that she's down here. She wasn't around for that first campaign. And Stephanie, who also is a spouse that helps somebody in public life, because she sure helps Dad, and she helps me, and I appreciate you, Stephanie. My father, Big Chuck, Grandpa Big Chuck, Chuck Senior, whatever you want to call him, he's my dad, and he's the reason that I'm really in public life for the Cherokee people, because he inspired that service. And Dad, I, I thank you so much. I'm one short tonight. My mother, Patricia, passed away during my first term. I wish she was here. I know that she would be proud, and I miss her every day. But, you know, she also inspired public service. I had parents who believed in public service, and, and that's what's brought me here. These are exciting times for the Cherokee people, exciting times for Cherokee Nation. And I'm just excited to be a part of the executive branch, if you'll have me. It's somewhat bittersweet, because I love the Council of the Cherokee Nation. And I think it's such an important branch of our government, because it's the closest to the people. And the disagreements that you hear, even the disagreements you heard a few moments ago, are good, because that's what Cherokees do. We, we disagree sometimes, but we come together, and we get things done. That's what's so wonderful about this branch of government that I'm about to leave. But, Madam Speaker, and to all my colleagues, I just, I just thank you so much for the opportunity to serve with each and every one of you. So with that, I'd, I'd stand for any questions, Madam Speaker.
Yes. Questions or comments on this end? I'm sorry. Mr. W-
I was gonna reiterate what I said today. I just appreciate your sacrifice and, and giving up your, your federal position to come and be with the Cherokee Nation. And I know you're gonna serve us well. And us, you know, we're the same age, I have a lot of respect for you, so.
Counselor, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
You always remind me I'm a little older than you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor McLeary.
Thank you, ma'am. Chuck, it's been good serving with you. My son got, was lucky enough to serve with your dad. This has been a really good combination, and, and I'm, we're gonna miss you up there. You were a strong counselor and, and a fair man, and you're gonna do the same good job here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that.
Counselor Lady Fulbright.
Thank you. As I said today in committee, we're sure gonna miss you, and you've done a very good job representing Cherokee people in their elephant speakers, and you always get your point across, and you never get your feathers ruffled, and you just did a really outstanding job. And I consider it a high honor that my colleagues voted for me. I can, cannot take your place, but I will serve as Deputy Chief, Deputy Speaker, and, but we're sure gonna miss you, and we depend on you a lot to give us guidance. And I know you'll be in a different top hat now over in Secretary of State's office, and we look forward to working with you. And I just want to congratulate you on your new position.
Counselor Fulbright, thank you. You're gonna do wonderful. You'll improve upon the deputy speakership, I know that.
Thank you. I'm glad you've got confidence in me. Thank you.
Yes. Counselor McGarvin.
I just want to say, congratulations, Chuck Jr. and Chuck Senior. I've enjoyed working with both of you, and wish you God's speed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Lady W-
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Congratulations, and I look forward to working with you in your new role. And I appreciate your candor earlier about concerns we had with both you and your father working so closely. And I look forward to the work that has probably piled up, I'm guessing, in the past year or so. So I too, you're in my prayers as you straighten all of that out and get that, tackle that workload, so. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor McBuesser.
I just want to say congratulations to you, Chuck Jr. I tell a little story about Chuck Jr. when Chuck Senior was a council member, and he had a meeting over in Wells, Oklahoma one night. We had probably 15, 18 people there, and he said, "I want to introduce my son, Chuck Jr." Chuck got up there, and he was really telling the people how we're gonna do this, and how we're gonna do that. I told my wife, going home, this guy here at some point in time is gonna come back and be representing the Cherokee Nation, or be in a, be a, in a campaign that's probably gonna, gonna win. So I think he's done that. He's told me he's gonna win a couple times. So congratulations to you.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that.
Yes. Counselor Lady-
Congratulations, Chuck. I think you'll do remarkable in your new role. You'll be an asset to the nation. We're losing you here, but it's a net gain. I think the fact that you and your father and the positions both of y'all hold speaks to the caliber of family that you have. As I said before in committee, it's a finish in line with the council, but it resembles a start in line for something else in your career. And I'm pretty proud of you for serving with the council.
I feel the same way, Counselor. Thank you.
Of course, you've always had my support. You've always had my back. You've, you've been good. You've actually been awesome as a deputy speaker. I hate to lose you. I think I've told you that from, from day one. But I, like somebody else said, knew back when you were 16 years- Of course, you've always had my support. You've always had my back. You've, you've been good, you've actually been awesome as a deputy speaker. I hate to lose you. I think I've told you that from, from day one. But I, like somebody else said, knew back when you were 16 years old what you were destined for. And I know that we're going to have a great working relationship, and I just appreciate everything that you've done.
Madam Speaker, I appreciate that. That means a lot. I appreciate it very much.
Yes, Councilman Byrd.
Cherokee people are very blessed to have somebody of your caliber that's willing to make the sacrifice in serving the people. We're very blessed. Thank you, Chuck.
Chief, thank you.
Councilman Snell.
Thank you, Chuck, for accepting this new position. I know you'll do very well at it. And I just love you and your family. I've known your father for 100 years. Well, not quite that long, but close. I know your grandfather, and I just love working with all of us. You'll do a very good job.
Thank you, Counselor, I appreciate that.
Okay. We'll go ahead and take a vote. This is a resolution. All those in favor can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. And congratulations. Chuck, while you're out there, we do have a little something that we want to give you as an outgoing councilman, and then he will be sworn in after the meeting also.
We're saving money now, we don't have to pay you.
Ms. Fishin Hall, read this, because I don't have the right to say anything.
The council says for six years of outstanding leadership and service as a tribal council member. The legacy you leave behind will be the cornerstone of progress for the Cherokee Nation. This is on behalf of the great council.
Now, everyone that would like, I want all the council to come and get in this picture. So if you all would indulge us for just a few minutes. Okay, we're all going to have to turn here like hockey.
See how they go on that. They've never played team sports.
Let's lay our phones down, bro. Should we get everybody in here?
This is, this is, we're standing to speak while all the hens speak. He's there, babe. I'm worried, I'm worried.
seat. Do I hear a motion on that?
Say it.
Okay, we have a motion and second, and I think we'll start over here with comments.
Yes, I have a question. The calling for the special tribal council meeting says discussion of special election to fill District 11 tribal council seat, but it doesn't say anything about possible action. So could we have an opinion from the Attorney General's office or our attorney?
I would ask Diane Barker-Harold to come forward, and I think somebody's here from the AG's office.
Yes.
Won't both of you come up here?
By the way, I will add that I'm not opposed to this, and I would like, wish that it would have been worded differently so that there wouldn't have been a question on voting.
Well, I've actually asked, because there was a discussion about it at the committee meeting, I asked our tribal attorney, council attorney, Diane Barker-Harold, and also the AG's office to look at this. And I would like to hear Diane Barker-Harold's comments regarding this specific issue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Councilor Baker did express a concern. He and I did discuss this, and I understood that he thought that there should be a word to vote. So I looked through the different codes in the Constitution, and this is what I found. And also, I looked at the rules of procedure for the council. In the rules, council rules of procedure, there's no requirement for specific wording on agenda items other than the order of business, which is roll call, new business, old business, reading of the minutes, and those kinds of things. Any directive of the chief to call special meeting, there's a strong implication that the meeting is for the purpose of voting and taking action for the chief, the reason gave in calling the meeting. Article 6, Section 5 of the Constitution says, "Meetings called by the chief, purposes of said meetings shall be stated in the notice published not less than 10 days prior to the meeting." And so the purpose of the, in the letter, and this is the kind of letter we've received before from the chief calling a special election. And so then the FOIA law, I looked at FOIA, Legislative Act 2507, and the definition of agenda means a memorandum of items of business or discussions to be brought up at a meeting. The FOIA law, Legislative Act 2501, Section 75, 1-10, says, "The notice of meetings of public bodies. All public bodies must be, must give written public notice of the regular and special meetings as required by the Constitution and laws of the Cherokee Nation. Nowhere do any of the provisions in the code, in the Constitution, or the rules of procedure of the council dictate or require specific language on agenda items from consideration, discussion, or vote." And I was looking specifically to try to, to answer Councilor Baker's question on this, but I could not find anything that required a specific action. And so I did ask the Attorney General to weigh in, and he is prepared to give an Attorney General's opinion if, if this came up after the meeting. So I'll defer to Elizabeth now.
Yes, we can give a formal opinion and a later date. We're not prepared to do so today. Any informal opinion would come from your attorney at this point. For a formal opinion, it would have to come in a later date, because we're not prepared to give one at this time.
Okay. Are there questions of our legal counsel?
Yes. So, and I'm not the attorney in the room. We've got several, so I'm deferring to all of you. But the Constitution, everything, is specific that we can't amend the agenda in terms of the agenda items. But I can't remember if that means we can't amend the title of, I guess would assume, because it would have to be pertinent to whatever it says. So if we left out action, I think we're leaving ourselves in a quandary. And the Attorney General's office is going to give no guidance today on the...
Not a formal opinion at this time. We could give a formal written opinion at a later date, but not today. We didn't, I mean, we just found out about the issue at the meeting along with everyone else, so...
Same as Jack, or Councilman Baker, I'm really concerned about the language, because it is specific about not having action in there. But we need to move forward with this today, so...
Is it my understanding our legal counsel sees no problem with this wording at this time?
I see no problem. If you wanted to amend...
I, I don't think we can amend...
Even to add the vote.
...that the chief has posted. Is this wording sufficient, in your opinion, to proceed forward tonight on this issue?
In my opinion, it is, because I believe that pursuant to the request of the principal chief calling a special meeting, it is a strong implication that the meeting is for the purpose of voting and taking action rather than just a discussion. Anybody can do a discussion, but the reason would be for the chief calling the meeting was the purpose of voting and taking action.
Then, then here's what I'm going to do. I'm, I'm going to suggest that we proceed on with this issue.
And the, and the speaker has that authority under the rules of procedure.
And in addition, I will go ahead and ask for the formal opinion to be given to us as soon as the AG can possibly do so.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Okay, so we have before us basically the calling of a special election, which under the Constitution, we must set the date, and we have discussed that date this afternoon. Do I hear a motion?
Would you make a motion?
Yes.
And for the resolution establishing the date of the special election to fill a vacancy for a council member for District 11 of the council of the Cherokee Nation. I know that would be approved.
And, Mr. Lay, that is part of the handouts that we have been given previously by our legislative aide? It's in this grouping, I believe.
Yes, I think there is.
And the date was October 12?
12.
Okay.
October 12.
And is that motion also with the attached, I forget, the attached timeline?
The attached timeline that, that we went, went through in committee.
Okay. Now, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would there be discussion or question?
Madam Speaker, point of order.
Yes.
Or information. So I think there was a friendly amendment accepted in committee that is not reflected on here. Is that correct, or is it already reflected? I was just, Councilman Lay?
It is reflected.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Are there other questions or comments? All minds clear? That is a resolution, Councilman Lay?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All those in favor of this resolution can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes will have it. We will officially call that election for District 11 on October 12, 2013, with the attached...
Timeline.
Timeline. Thank you all. There being no other business that can be considered at this meeting, are there announcements? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. If you all would stay, we're going to have the swearing in of two of our...